You guys ready? Seven o'clock. We rise, take off your hats, go Cubbies, and we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Let me just turn this off for a second. I apologize. Ready? All wired up and ready to go? Okay, we have a quorum. Marcia is not here, she's not feeling very well, but she's here with us in spirit, and I'm sure she'll watch this. We have minutes of July 24th from an executive session, and we also have the council minutes of July 16th.
Can we put them together?
I don't see why not.
I'd make a motion, we approve both sets of minutes.
Second.
I have a motion to approve the minutes from July 24th and July 16th, and I have a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Let's start with our public meetings. First off is the redevelopment commission fund request by Ben Comer. And as Ben is making his way up here, I want to state for the record that I am a member of this committee, and when it does come time for voting on funding, I am going to recuse myself.
Hi, everybody. How's everybody doing?
How are you?
Good, good. I'm Ben Comer. I am on the, your redevelopment commission. Other members, Jerry Vornhold, Keith Ross, David Glover, and Representative Superintendent, Dr. Tracy Schaefer. Most of those guys are in the audience with us as...
I see most of them.
...interested parties.
I see Glover.
So, as I mentioned, we represent the town. We are the Danville Redevelopment Commission. We were recently formed, just in this year. We're getting our feet wet and understanding what our roles and responsibilities are, and we are gearing up to try to make some economic development projects happen within the town. It takes money to make that happen. We're here to ask for money in order to do a lot of different things, starting with hiring lawyers and consultants, because it's a code section under the law that we operate, and we need to make sure we're operating properly, as well as infrastructure that comes with economic redevelopment. So, with all that said, our request to you for consideration is a $50,000 amount from the 2018 host fund, and your consideration also of $100,000 from Edit from the 2019 budget. So, that's not petty change, but it's an amount we feel like if we're going to do this, this is the amount we're asking for to do what we need to do.
One question, Ben, you being one of the finest lawyers we have. Will you be donating your time to that, to bring the cost down?
Of course.
If I'd like to hear.
I will say this, a couple of things. Number one, the law is very specialized these days. I can't say that I, while I am around development and represent some developers, this is an aspect of the code that I don't have a lot of practical experience in.
You do sound like a lawyer.
I asked him the same thing earlier. Didn't get a dime out of him either. All right, so, we have this request, thank you, Ben, for $50,000 from the host fund and $100,000 from the Edit. Jenny, what are your thoughts on this? You control the money, the purse strings for us.
I provided you guys with a cash report as of today, year-to-date, for the Edit Fund and as well for the Host Fund. I realize that the $50,000 request is for this year's Host Budget, and we are knee-deep in budgeting for 2019 for the Edit Fund, so I'm meeting tomorrow and Wednesday with Umbal to finish up our cash flow projections and see where our circuit breaker hit and tax levies are going to be and where we're going to be. So I would like to wait to determine the amount from the Edit Fund till we get, you know, the next council meeting. Umbal, Paige, and Susan and myself will be here to present the budget for next year, so that can be a part of the budget process that we're presenting.
You guys think?
Yeah, if she feels we, I mean, have a better overall picture of where we're at, absolutely. I mean, just a matter of waiting a few days, yes.
I'm in full support of both those amounts from both those different funds. I agree with Jenny to wait a week. I, however, won't be in town for the next meeting, so I just want to make sure that, you know, it has my full support. And then I want to thank the people from the Board Committee that came. Usually they just send one spokesperson. When you all come, it shows a vested interest in the town and in the money you're asking for, so thank you all for being here.
Tom?
Yeah, I feel that's the correct way to do it, see what the budget says and go from there.
Ben, you okay with that?
Absolutely.
All right, the rest of the board members, are you all right with that? Because it's going to happen, I just, I'll make it a warm fuzzy.
That makes sense. What about the 2018?
Personally, I'm not a fan of dipping into the Host at any point in time, but I would, again, defer back to Jenny and wait until we get a better picture. That's my thoughts.
This is Dick Burrows right there in you.
All right. So, we're at a consensus that we'll wait until we get a better financial picture. We're not saying no, we just need, we need a better picture.
I think we're all in support.
When you're reading into that, that we didn't say no, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. All right, opioid litigation participation. Aiken.
Well, Mr. Nielsen, I think most of you were here when Manny or Chul came and made the presentation, so your knowledge of that presentation is just as good as mine. I'm not seeing any smiles on your face, but nonetheless, it's up to us to make a decision if we're going to participate in this litigation. It's not going to cost us anything. Do so. It continues to grow. The FSSA has received funds and put in clinics, and Hendricks County is a recipient of some of those funds for a clinic to be built. So, it's just whether or not you as a council feel comfortable in participating in the litigation, it's nationwide.
And are these attorneys feel like they have a very good chance of winning this case, or at least...
I think if you ask any attorney what their chances are, they're always going to say that they have a great opportunity. The last time I talked with Chul, he was in West Virginia testifying, so I would say that they're very positive.
What's the wishes of the council? Do we jump in on this or no? And it costs us anything financially, what is our benefit?
I was going to say, if it's, the benefit is what? I mean, they're looking for us to be part of this.
I think it just adds clout to the...
I would say, it's something, it's something I agree with as far as, it's not an expense, so...
It's a tough one for me, because I'm in this industry, and I will support this, but it doesn't grade well with me that we will do the shots, do all we can for people overdosing, but we have people dying of cancer that can't get the drug because they can't afford it.
So, the whole opioid thing has my head and heartstrings in a whirlwind, but if it's not costing us anything, I'll support it.
I have a son that was a drug addict for 12 years, and I know what it does to a family. I would support this fully.
All right, and I will put my backing behind this as well. So, let's do a motion. Anyone want to make a motion?
Yeah, Mr. President, make a motion, or, Mr. President, I'm sorry, make a motion to approve the...
Participation.
Participation in the opioid litigation, participation with Taft attorneys.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a third. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have our blessings. All right. Third item, interest in property at 98 West Broadway. Mr. Aiken.
I need to ask if the property owners are here tonight. Thank you.
Okay.
The town was approached by these individuals and asking if the town had any interest in 98 West Broadway. For me, it's the old hind line residential property. It's for your bearings, it's right across from where we put in a new parking lot. So, typically with the approach, that's what we're looking for, is that we're going to create more parking, or we're going to turn it over to the RDC. The RDC is going to see what they can do to provide seed money or purchase property, turn around, resell it for a specific use. Right now, I don't know of any proposed projects or uses for that piece of property, so...
Was it dollar amount?
There's no dollar amount listed.
Do we not, did we happen to, did we happen to dig into it to see what it was appraised at?
Not.
Is there anything on our schedule that's, new Public Works building, probably a little small for that?
A little small for that.
Is there anything on our radar right now?
To my knowledge, not from the RDC.
With the huge need for parking around the square, it'd be nice to know how much, what are we getting into, and then how good of shape is it? If we did do it, would it be worth turning it into something livable or something for the town, or could we, or is it just better to have a parking, another parking lot? Because we definitely need them, and we, none of us want them on 36 because we like the overlay and how it looks coming into town and around the square, but if...
I like where you're coming from, but I don't think that piece of property will accommodate...
Not very big.
Probably no more than five spots.
Really?
And, you know, it's a very small lot that it sits on, so...
Did my math. I had three, six, nine. I had nine, but I don't know parking like you do, so...
Well, you've got to take into effect the maneuvering aisle, which is...
Right.
24 feet back up, so you don't hit somebody.
From a downtown standpoint, I'd hate to see us eliminate another structure downtown from just taking off the tax rules and leveling our downtown. We'll start to look like the center of a sea of parking lots, so...
Interesting. All right, anything else from the council? Sounds like there's not much interest at this point, but thank you for the opportunity. Okay, ordinance 13, 2018, airport annexation phase three introduction, Laura Parker.
It is the third and final phase. Do as introduced it by Tyler. We bring you back to Page 4.
Okay, this is ordinance 13, 2018. An ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Danville, Indiana, annexing territory to the Town of Danville, placing the same within the corporate boundaries thereof, and making the same a part of the Town of Danville. Gordon Graham Airport, Phase 3, super voluntary annexation. It has been introduced. Thank you. All right, on to papers straight here. Ordinance 10, 2018, golf cart use and operation. Laura, again.
In your handout, I provided you with the revisions that were discussed at the last meeting. I'm in yellow for you, so you can see the changes that were made. Since that meeting, Mr. Phillips came back in and met and said he reconsidered a couple of those items. The flashing yellow beacon suggested, after getting some feedback, that maybe that wasn't a good idea, and to remove that. And then you might recall, we also discussed making the operator's age restricted that to 18 instead of 16. So, the logic being if the state of Indiana will license you at 16, then who are we to say that you can't drive? Those were the two significant changes. I added in the signalization crossings for the state roads. You drive on 36 or 39, so that's...
The speed limit one, I'd like to change. One, no speed limit, but I guess 35 at least, because you can't get out of Wexford or Stratford Ridge, you'd be stuck in those places. And the state already has things with provisions for vehicles that drive slow with the triangle on the back, and we drive up and down those streets. These streets are not very long, and I feel 35 would be probably where it should be. You understand what I'm saying?
So, in the original ordinance, it was 25 miles an hour, but our actual standard speed limit is 30. And then, you know, in a typical subdivision, you're going to find 30. You try and exit out on a collective, referencing 50 North, Sycamore Lane, those tend to be higher than 35, so we would be prohibiting them from even exiting a subdivision, so that's why Tom suggested.
And they're all these small distances. They're not like, you know, 20 miles or anything.
Is there any more discussion about a fee or a license?
This time, just the way it's written, as long as we're not, you know, be asking for registration or anything. If you want to, that ramps it up. We can actually implement it without doing a permit or an inspection.
I don't have a golf cart, so I don't really have that big of a deal. People I've talked with don't have golf carts. I must live in the wrong neighborhood. We have trees. So, I don't know if that's that big of a deal.
I think if you do put fees on it, it would probably cost us more to run the fees than it would be.
If we do a $120,000 fee, I know where we could spend that money. Can I help out? We're kind of a pass-through agency there.
Since I'm pro this ordinance, I've been looking around. I drove up to North Salem, and I don't know if you've ever been up there, but everybody's got a golf cart up there. So this weekend, I stopped as many as I could, and I chatted with them. How do you like this? Oh, we'd love it. We never use our car, and even in the winter, they use gators with Cajun Lake Park has, but still, the town really likes it. I see golf carts everywhere around that town, and I get so many positive things from people. Jimmy, I'm sure you have as well, and maybe some of you other people have, but I'm really for it, and I think it would be fun for the town.
Tom mentioned gators, UTVs, gators, things like that. Not mentioned in here, specifically it says golf cart. So would those be prohibited then, or do, would that be one of those things, we just look the other way?
They're expressly prohibited by definition on public streets. Private property is not an issue.
Sure. So when our gators go out on the highway, they're not supposed to do that?
There's an exemption for that written into the ordinance. Town use, town officials using it for town...
So we already have gators running on the road?
But, some.
Yeah. Okay, Dennis sets the precedent. Mr. Lawyer?
It's not his forte, I don't think.
Not his forte.
And I don't think he's got a golf, he doesn't have a golf cart either.
He will have one.
We need to open up a dealership here quick. So we have a question of whether or not the yellow flashing lights would be reintroduced, is that correct, Laura?
Want to put it back in, we'd have to write it back into the ordinance.
And any, see for any, any problem with a 35 mile an hour limit? We've gone from 25 to 30, now we're going to 35.
Any other town workers, fire department, any issue here, streets?
Water, wastewater, probably not. Just checking, check with all our staff. Parks? Where'd you go? There you are. And that would be, and that would be an important point.
How are they going to get from Stratford to go anywhere then? So then, nobody in Stratford could have a golf cart or Park Ridge.
So, yes, there is a link between Aiken Park and Stratford Ridge, and that walkway is there, but actually, the dirt between Stratford Ridge and Gary Aiken Park is slated for a road. It's nobody's private. Am I saying this correct? Nobody's private road.
Public right of way, you're correct.
Yeah.
I definitely wouldn't be for a road there.
And so, it's a golf cart, it goes on grass, it can go over that.
We told the people we wouldn't.
Well, that's definitely something we need to take a look at. Is there a burning desire to have this done immediate, immediately?
No, but I don't think it's...
Run out of golf cart season?
No.
I don't know.
I think it's an easy one. I think everybody's for it. I don't think we have to make too much work in it. I think after a month or so, we'll form a committee, and then they will come back and fine-tune it for us, and I think that's where these things can be picked up.
Can't vote on it now, and then it'd be fine-tuned later, and vote on it again. Should we go with it or we don't?
Do that all the time, don't we?
Yeah.
We tweak and we tweak. But if you're talking about a committee, which I have no problem with...
Right.
Who would be on this committee? Obviously you, because you have an interest in it. Jim, because he wrote the darn thing.
Will? Freeze enough.
Yeah, I'm fine with them going on the grass. I just know that the residents of Stratford are vehemently against a road to connect 36 to...
But there's going to be no road there. It's just the grass.
And this is why a committee can hammer out these and bring it back to the council. Is that agreeable with everyone to...
I mean, there'll be people at Stratford Ridge that'll have carts that want to go there. Now that the...
And that's fine, but I agree with Dennis's point that let's, let's not keep tweaking it and tweaking it. If you guys can give us something that's comprehensive, that answers those questions...
Are you good with them going on the grass there, Will?
That's what I think they would do.
Like, it's not going to be, I don't think it's going to be a lot of people. I just don't want to run where cars can go back and forth, because then you've got too much chaos.
It's only 40 feet. What do you mean, like the cars park?
Cars.
Yeah, but like the cars. What do you mean, like extra, like in the middle of the park and everything? Well, we could put a sign there, say, well, same parking as cars. I think we have that in there. We park where cars park. It's already in the ordinance.
All right, so we do, we do have this ordinance. We can either vote on it now, we can, well, we'd have to suspend the rules, correct? I know it's been introduced, but this is a new version, right? We could, we could edit, okay. We can vote on it now, we could allow Tom to form his committee, and it doesn't matter to me. If you don't want to do that, then go ahead and make the motion on the ordinance, or we table it until we get our answers, questions answered. What's the pleasure of the council?
I think there's still some questions to be answered, personally. I think it will absolutely, I'm hugely in favor for it. I have a golf cart. You know, but yeah, I agree with Will. I could see, you know, I think there does need to have, there are some questions that need to be answered.
Should we table it? Yeah, fine.
Make that motion.
And perhaps, I think each time we talk about it, we learn a little bit of something. I forget, I think it's, personally, I would say it's going to happen, it's just a matter of time, but just tidy up a few things. I'd make a motion, yes, that we discuss and for table it, so we can have maybe some discussion to bring it back quickly at a later date.
Second. Okay, we have a motion to table this with further discussion, get some questions answered, possibly form a committee, which I have no problem with. And we have a second. All in favor of tabling ordinance number 10, 2018? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, this is tabled. Tom, if you would spearhead this committee and bring Will on board and Jim and do...
You have a hand up in the back.
Young man in the back. Okay. So we have, we've got two town employees, we've got a council member, we have a citizen. Anybody else? Can we get the golf pro out there, the, the bridges? And if you could find out, meet sometime, we'll leave it up to your discretion, and then report back to the council, possibly in the form of an updated ordinance, that would be great, and work with Gary and Laura to get that taken care of.
And I, if it comes back to the next meeting, I won't be here, but I'm for this, just want a little more, you know, a little more, peel back down a little more, but I'm for it, so...
Okay, that's our direction then. All right, IT project updates, Will.
What's everyone doing tonight? I just wanted to kind of touch base with you guys, I haven't talked with you in a while from the IT side. Also, just kind of introducing the committee there, Jenny Piercey, Kyle Richards, Jerry Chris, Laura Parker, Matt Oliphant, Barry Loffin, Keith Ross, Rob Roberts, Julie Cooney, Will Lacy, and One Choice Technology. They've worked hard, just kind of like this is an extra thing, we're looking to do collaborative just to help, you know, keep a high standard on the IT front for the whole town, and I just wanted to kind of thank them too, because we've been meeting for about, I think, two, two years, pretty much two years, and I just want to kind of highlight some of those things that we have done in those two years. So 2018 has pretty much been completely focused on infrastructure, updating a lot of stuff that is completely outdated, and we pretty much have completed most of that. Those are the highlighted in yellow things, I don't know if you guys had the highlighted version. Nine through 13, pretty much, is what we've been doing this year, to kind of plan to move forward, because we can't really move forward without making sure everything, you know, our backbone is solid, and that's what we've been kind of doing. You've seen some interruptions here in the past, like three or four months, and a lot of that has been because the old stuff we have is failing. We had the new stuff in, but we couldn't put the new stuff in yet, so it's kind of like that in-between time, so we had a few bumps in the road, but we're completely functional now with the new server and everything too, which is pretty important, because we were operating in a 2003 server, which didn't even have service on it from Microsoft anymore, so. We're in the future, we have ports now, we're moving forward, and it's all because the IT committee came in and, you know, knew what the importance was, and it's moving forward. Update on projects there, if you look on that second sheet with those yellow highlighted areas, these are just some of the projects that we've done over the past two years. I mean, you can read them yourself. We've just been moving forward, trying to upgrade all of our infrastructure and our, pretty much our things that we need to do normal business. Some, some big things we're working on right now is the chrono system. Jenny's kind of been heading that, she's doing a great job. We're still kind of learning on that, beta testing pretty much for the next couple of weeks and bringing staff on board with it too, but, you know, that's not only a great IT thing, but it's also a great infrastructure and just a good human resources thing for the town as well, so. We're working on a camera upgrade too, it's one of the projects... It's one of the projects we're working on for 2019. Right now, we're doing some of the infrastructure for it. 2018 is building plans and finding out where our needs are, and then we'll get a estimate from the company from there, and then we can kinda move forward. We may have to phase in some of that just because of the cost. But our goal is to kinda, if we don't know the plan to get to where we need to be, we'll never be there. So, putting that plan together, we found it to be pretty important, high on our list, the cameras are, because of the need recently of, you know, camera footage and things like that. And some of the stuff that we have is so outdated that we need to, you know, kinda dive in. And then we'll all be on the same system, which is great, so the police can have access to all the cameras, which, you know, is great for them too. So, all around, it's a win-win for sure. Trying to think anything else on there. Below that number 13, those, everything down is pretty much things that we've, you know, constantly been working on or have maybe planned for the future. We might not be able to afford most of them, but we wanna put them on the list, just so we have those dreams, so that we know, you know, if we hit the end of the rainbow and there's gold, maybe someday, we can actually move forward on some of those projects. And then also, some of those things, like the website, that was actually, I think Laura spearheaded that one prior to the committee being together. But we're gonna look at that too, and try to upgrade things there when we do kinda like a self-audit on our own website. Try to move forward on those things. And then the utilities are doing the asset management, and I think you guys will be talking about this here, but that's just another project. It's not really ours, but it, you know, it is if you think about the big picture. So, we've been moving, moving forward on a lot of things, and I just wanted to let you guys know, and we wanted to let you know that we are doing stuff. You may not always see it, but we are. And if you had any questions on things you'd like us to look at for the future, feel free to shoot it over to me, or tell the committee, or you can ask me now. And I just wanna keep you updated on, on what we're doing.
Any questions for Will? We had any interruptions in the last week or so?
Uh-uh. Nope.
Since you're up, we wanna talk about the speeding around the park.
That's up to you guys.
I asked before, the couple of citizens asked me, they were speeding through the park. And the road around the park is black, and there's nothing to say slow down. And Will has been kind enough to do a little survey on it. I thought since he was up there, instead of asking him up again, we could just-
Is that in our packet?
No, no.
Isn't that park board?
It's up to you guys. You wanna talk about it?
That's why we had a park board.
You wanna explain that? No, because I haven't seen it before.
So, we did a, we did a traffic study in the park. Tom asked me to look for, look at speeding, 'cause he had a lot of people asking him. We knew it was a problem, so Chet from Traffic Engineering had, did a little study for us and had some recommendations. And so, once we compile his proposal, we'll probably come back and talk about it then. But he pretty much proposed that we line the park, and we add crosswalks and stuff in there to visually, somehow it visually makes you slow down.
I asked Will at one of the council meetings, a couple of council meetings back about that, and he's come up with this, which has been very professional.
Good.
There you go. Come up with your recommendations.
You want me to roll into the trees?
Yeah.
Okay, so the next one, I come to you. So, as you know, we've had some issues with ash trees, and we have two big areas of ash trees now left in our safety fall zones, we'll call them. One there, well, one bunch is next to the swinging bridge. That's A and B on your map there. And then I just kinda labeled A and B on the pictures. There's a group of like six, I think, or so, right by the swinging bridge, and then there's two that actually line the entrance of the swinging bridge. And you can actually see in that picture B, the, the effect of a bark. The tree on the right has some growth on the bottom, but all the rest of the trees don't have any growth. And so, we don't have any funds to remove these trees, and I am scared that they are gonna fall either on the bridge or on the roadway, or, I mean, they're just in scary fall zones. And so, my request is you, maybe use Host Discretionary or some funding source to remove those trees.
Will, didn't we have a tree fall on a lawyer?
Yeah.
Was that an ash tree?
His car. Yes, no, that actually was a different tree.
I thought that was the line of a joke or something, right?
It was silent.
No, that tree actually had been eaten inside by carpenter ants, and it was on the creek tree line, and the top of it broke off and smacked the top of his car. So, I actually watched the whole thing happen. I was in the front lot, and I looked over and I heard it, and I was like, no! But yeah, couldn't do anything. Help call the police, that was about it. So, and these are, I mean, you've probably seen these. There's one that's super scary. It almost looks like it's buckling on the A picture. And I'm just scared every time I drive by it, I cringe, because I, you know, it's, it's a safety hazard, a really big one too. And there's, there's only like, maybe three or four that are in any sort of way now, ash trees to where they could maybe fall that you can see. But some of them, I think we can piece down this fall, once it hits winter.
All right, Will. I've seen these trees, ash trees on my property, and they went fast. And I keep, I do the same thing, I look up and go-
Yes, like, ah.
Wait for the next big storm.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, the trees fall when they're ready to fall, not when we want them to. On this particular one?
Sure.
I know this tree is diseased, and I know this one is starting to show. Is it your idea to cut them both while he's there?
Yeah. Plus, it's, the tree is dead on the top. I mean, it's just a matter of time.
Exactly.
And then, I'm also, at some point, gonna have a structural person come out, because both of those trees are on the, right in front of the footings of the bridge. So, I just wanna make sure. When, back in 2015, I had Effie Gates come out and inspect the bridge, and they said the footings were like the size of cars. So, I think we'll be good, but I just wanna make sure, you know, 'cause if we get in there and I, maybe I won't stump grind those, maybe I'll just leave them, you know, cut flush, just so they hold everything intact. But yeah, I just, I wanna make sure, 'cause that bridge is an icon, and I don't, I don't wanna lose that bridge, so.
Council members, what do you think?
Need to figure it out.
Getting money from somewhere, I think. We definitely need to-
Jenny, best place?
I would say Host Discretionary Fund, it has a balance of $49,000.
Okay, so, there's money in the Host Discretionary, and we have a $12,000, $12,450 bill from Roy. What's the pleasure of the council?
Make a motion. We use Host Discretionary to allow Will to hire Wolf Tree Service to remove the trees we discussed in the park.
Second.
I have a motion to take $12,450 out of the Host Discretionary Fund and a, and a second to pay for the tree cutting. Any other discussion? All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 4-0. Cut your trees. Do you have a timeframe?
As soon as he can get to them. So, my guess would be, yeah, a week to two weeks.
Wondering about that storm coming through-
Yeah.
Tonight, tomorrow, that night, may lower our bill a little bit.
Yeah. Thank you.
Or increase it. Yeah, true, that's true. All right.
By Bridge.
RFI for insurance agent of record, Mr. Aiken.
This document was utilized last fall. The county council was approved to be sent out. I double-checked it, 'cause I wanted to make sure errors in the mission's policy was required. And it is listed in the RFI. So, what I'm looking for now is approval of the council. Send this out no later than the 22nd of August. And we're looking to get these documents back by September 15th. Our goal is to select an agent by October.
First or third meeting in October?
It would be-
First or second meeting in October, I'm sorry.
Probably the first meeting in October.
Opening day of deer season, really? You wanna make a big decision like that on that day? October 1st.
Let's hear that, or we all get a little batty.
Well played.
Does it take a motion or just consent?
Consensus, I think.
Jim, you good?
100%.
Dennis? Tom?
Oh, pardon?
Are you, are you okay with Gary sending out this RFI? All right, and I agree as well. We've got consensus, let's go. Okay, almost done here, kids. Capital assess, assets, excuse me, mapping for water. Jimmy?
Coming to you requesting some funding for capital asset mapping for the water system. Recently, Banning Engineering, it's about completed with the asset management for the wastewater. And I've got Mark Butler here from Banning Engineering trying to give you a brief overview, so.
Sawyer?
All right. Similar to the sewer system, we'd like to do the same type of, of asset mapping for the water system. So, what this entails is that we would locate all of the valves, fire hydrants, meters, in the entire town for the water utility. And what this does is it, it locates each one and, and gives it more than just coordinates, but also a condition assessment of, of each one, okay? And you look, for example, if, if you had a water meter, there would be a picture of inside the meter attached to this, so. And if you looked at a fire hydrant, there would be a picture of that fire hydrant, and it would show the make and the, and the date that it was cast on that, okay? Then that information would be available to the utility as an internal asset system, okay? And that, what that means is that it's available on their desktop computer, or on their phone, or tablet for field, and in the office, okay? And having this kind of information at your fingertips is very powerful, especially as you retool it for an inspection program, or, or looking at upgrading meters, which ones have been upgraded, which ones, that kinda thing. So, our scope is, is quite large, actually. There's 3200 meters?
3300.
3300 meters. In addition to fire hydrants and valves, and we're looking at over 4,800 points potentially that we're gonna be mapping. So, if you look at from a cost perspective, each of those points actually take a lot less time for us to collect than looking and evaluating manholes. However, there's more than, there's about four times as many points in the water system as there are in the sewer system. So, the cost ends up being right about the same to do that. So, we're excited to get started, and I'd like to know if you have, if you have any questions.
Jimmy, can you use this information, say, when we have a water break?
Oh, absolutely. That's part of the mapping. We can bring it up electronically on a laptop or whatever. Our mapping will be electronic, as well as we can have hard copies in the trucks also. Currently now, we're operating off of, I've got some 30's maps, I got the 1960's maps. All this will be generated all on this. It'll be that, 'cause I gave them a copy of the 60's maps, because some of the looping is a lot different back then than it is now. And it's valuable that we have that, because if some night, can't get the water off, and I say, well, I know that valve is part of the looping, you kill it, it shuts it off. So, that, all that information will be on there. Yeah, it's invaluable. And then also, too, as new subdivisions come in, and typically, they're supposed to provide us ASBILs, they will be required to add this electronically to our mapping system, as, 'cause it's gonna be all ours. Instead of us trying to wait on it, we get ASBILs, we give it to them, they have to plot it on there, these guys will have to provide that information. That's part of their, all their development of subdivisions. So, that helps us out.
Chief Morgan?
Yes.
Would you be able to access the fire hydrant information?
If it is the information, it would be valuable, because for more than anything, the size of the main-
We can, we'll do that, and then also, too, as time goes in there, we can generate, we can do pressure readings through all those areas, associate with those size of water mains, and that will help also for the fire department.
At $58,700, yeah, they'll share, they'd better share the-
Oh, yeah, it'll all be there. Yeah, I think we have over, what, almost 600 fire hydrants in town, so.
I had to do my calculator, 'cause I have Danville math, but for $12.22 per, that's pretty good.
That's pretty good, yeah, yeah, yeah. It's valuable, and then, like I said, it saves all the, the old maps that we've, you know, we always keep that hard copies, but if we get this electronically, just for now, whether I'm here or whoever's here, that will help them out in the future.
$12 a little bit easier to take, $58,000, so it sounds better.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Matt, how long will this take?
We're hoping, Mark, by the way. I get it all the time. No, I'm just kidding. We plan to do the mapping before the end of the season, okay? So, before snow flies. Now, we can still map in the wintertime, as long as there's not snow cover. It just makes it harder to find things, you know, or if the covers won't come up because of, because of freezing, so.
Well, this process, during this process, will you actually be able to determine the condition of, or is it more of just IDing it, locate, it's not necessarily inspecting it?
Yeah, it's a good question. Obviously, the water lines are not visible, and if they are, we got a big problem.
As far as you-
Yeah, the, what, the way you would rate that is we would set up a, a way to, to get the age, material, and the size. That, those three are critical for water lines. So, that comes, that comes from the water department, that we can input into the map very easily, so.
You, you can't actually, yeah, you're not gonna say this pick, but you know that you're dealing with an old pipe, or an old valve.
But, but to your point, think of the scenario of a water main break. This kind of system, you, the, the people going to respond to that call can take this with them, take a picture of the main break, and then attach that to the line that had the break on it, and that will be forever stored in there. So, when they come back the next time, oh, we fixed a break right there on this date so many years ago. And then if you have five of them on a line, then you start being able to use that as a planning tool. Okay, we need to replace this line, you know, rather than having that stored in a file cabinet somewhere.
Because you're doing this all at once, you know, right now, what about new builders that come in? Would we tack on a fee to them, so that they would take this burden to the town?
We talked about that, that the new builders, new, if new subdivision comes in, they will have to provide all that information and pay for that out of the part of their thing to put this on the mapping. Yeah, 'cause they have to provide us an ASBIL, so that would be basically part of their ASBILs, to show where all them structures are-
Okay.
On that, yeah. They have to do all that. And then, as far as the, the age of the hydrants and stuff, there's projects that I was involved with 25 years ago, that the hydrants have the dates on the hydrants. So, that pretty well got your memory with the hydrants getting in there. And then, normally, we'd have stacks of blue sheets of work orders we've done, repairs and everything, we draw just kinda maps and stuff. By doing this electronically now, we can make it a little more nicer, instead of trying to remember back 20 some years ago. We tend to forget things. But as far as the age of the, the pipe, yeah, I've been here, I've been here 40 some years, and I learned from the guys that've been here 40 some years before me, how it's on my mind, so. I think we can, I think it's a, it's a plus. Headed in the right direction.
Last all-important question here. You got the money in the accounts?
Yes. I think I've got-
I was gonna start it with that, we've wrapped up a little since.
Yeah, I got two accounts, we're just kinda splitting it out of.
Okay, so, any other questions? So, we have a department expenditure request for $20,000 from the 650-500, 63-52 account, and $38,700 from the 63-54 account. Jim says he's got the money in his account, I believe him. What is the will of the council? Let's make it a motion, and let's go.
So moved.
All right, I have a motion to approve the department expenditure request. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second and a third. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Get it going, boys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Share that information. Okay. Anything from the public tonight? Okay, let's go around the horn real quick. Mr. Aiken?
This is my first meeting back since medical leave, so.
Like you didn't skip a beat?
Feels, feels a little awkward, but it feels good.
I'll be off in four months, and you can pick someone else to run the show. It's good to have you back. Laura?
Thank you.
Ray? Jim?
Nothing.
Gary?
Jim.
Jimmy? Chief Morgan? You're fine. Asking.
Couple of months ago, uh, some of the deputies from the sheriff's department contacted me about possibly running, uh, uh, for their merit board. Uh, the merit board's, uh, probably is similar to the police commission here in town. Um, a couple of weeks ago, um, I went ahead and took advantage of the situation, uh, ran for the, uh, position, and was elected by the deputies to represent them on their merit board. Um, I consider this to be an extremely high honor, to be honest with you, um, considering, uh, you know, I worked there for nearly twenty years, and then to be turned around and be elected by my, uh, people that I supervised, so, um, this won't interfere with my position as fire chief. Uh, the meetings are, uh, second Tuesday of the month. Uh, like I said, I don't look for it to interfere at all. I, I have a wonderful command staff underneath me, I feel very confident that, uh, in my absence, they can obviously handle things greatly, but, uh, I did want to let the council know that, uh, that I have taken on a, for some reason, another role, so, be happy to entertain any questions.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, proud of you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Chief Franny, anything? Okay, Jenny?
Just that at the next council meeting, we'll be presenting the twenty-nineteen budget with Paige Wittenbaugh and Susan.
Tom?
Uh, can I ask, uh, Ken Phillips, Chris, Mr. Crisp, and, uh, so Lacy to come here after the meeting and chat with you about that?
Uh, just real quick, we've got, uh, eight, uh, former high school students just graduated, going in the military, they're going to their basic training this week and next. If we as a town could keep them in our prayers, that'd be great.
Jim?
Very well said. Uh, nothing.
The only thing I have is, uh, and correct me if I'm wrong here, Chief Franny, but it's, uh, Police Night out, August ninth?
Tomorrow night.
It's tomorrow night?
Yeah, Fourth Square.
Seventh, okay, for, I've been two days late to that show. All right, what time does it start? Five to eight-thirty on the square, correct? Hey, everybody show up, hopefully it'll be dry. All right, Claim Docket?
Moved to approve.
I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed?